So, I'm calling to order the Suffolk Central. I'm gonna keep saying this, Grammer's all. Suffolk Central School District Board of Education is meeting Tuesday, March 20, 2018. Let the record reflect that the board members present do not include what will include shortly, Clark Osborne, Teresa Monahan, and Amani Deguin. So, that being said, the chairman intends to go into executive session for the purposes of one, review with the superintendent of schools, deputy superintendent, director of athletics, and attorney for the board of education, issues pertaining to coaching positions. Two, review with attorney for the board of education settlement of Stonehenge Hype Tax proceeding. Three, review with attorney for the board of education settlement of the SSTUSA tax proceeding. Four, review with the superintendent of schools and attorney for the board of education legal issues pertaining to appointment of director, health services, to conduct an examination of a staff member pursuant to education law 913. Review with the attorney for the board of education status of negligence supervision litigation. Six, review with attorney for the board of education status of collection of school taxes matters. Seven, review with attorney for the board of education legal issues concerning days when school is in session and legal holidays. Eight, reviewing with the superintendent of schools and the assistant superintendent for instruction information pertaining to five staff members being recommended before tenure. Tommy.
Motion.
Tommy, second.
Second.
All, all the papers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Move, exceptions. Alright, apologies for being late. Usually we start at 7:30, but I had a lot of business upstairs and I was long overdue. We are at, where are we? Recalls to order the Suffolk Central School District Board of Education meeting Tuesday, March 20, 2018. If we all could, please stand for the twenty minutes.
Of course. For the reasons.
To the right, United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, 1.07, student report. Hi Matt.
Hi.
What's going on today, Matt?
Is today a special day or no?
Hello, special? It's special for you?
Yes.
For your family? It's Matt's birthday today. Happy birthday! You get to give a report, that's awesome. Good for you.
Good evening. Here's what's going on at the high school. This week is musical week at the high school. This year's musical is chess. So, great music, great acting, good stuff, I really recommend seeing it. Especially, I'm in the orchestra and I got to overhear some of the pit practicing and I really recommend it so easily. This Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, the main cast is performing at high school at 7:00 PM. And Saturday, the understudy cast will be performing at 1:00 PM. Also, some exciting news, last week, the academic league won their championship. And finally, I would like to bring up the student-led walkout, which I mentioned last week. The walkout had an amazing turnout with around 1,400 kids in total. The event was very solemn and there were no issues. Many of the students walked up to the track and did a few laps and we all paid respect and tribute to the 17 miles walking heart with. Unfortunately, there was another school shooting today in Maryland, as I'm sure many of you have heard about. But if we students, along with the communities across the country, continue with the actions such as the walkout, we can influence change and make our country an even better place. Together, we can all make a difference. And thank you, how do we make? Sitting.
Turn around the room, we have a walkie talkie tonight. Easy, Matt. Easy. We have the audit committee. Mr. Levy, how are you?
Good, how are you?
If you would. Or Matt, do you want to add this?
Alright, good evening, everyone. Okay, I think you have, should have, oh, I have two reports. One was the report that we did over an internal control area, purchasing accounts payable and cash disbursement area, and then there was a system update that was more current. And I'll do as much or as little as the board wants, like, you know, if you read through the reports and you have questions, I can go there and answer questions. If you want me to go through the reports in detail, I can do that. You know, I'm kind of new enough to the board and what you all want.
Well, I think if you maybe if you summarize it and then the board will maybe ask questions and everything.
Okay. Okay, so go through both reports quick. Go through both reports quick?
Yeah, I mean, I know, personally, I have a few questions on the internal report.
Okay.
I can't speak for anybody else, so.
Okay, I'll go through real quick.
So yeah, if you want to do a brief on each, then I guess we'll all done it.
Okay, so the first report to look through is the, it has the notation internal audit services, purchasing accounts payable and cash dispersments. So this was the internal audit area selected last year, so we did this review of this area in the spring of 2017. And you can see on the first page, under conclusion, we categorize all these internal reports, internal audit reports that we do as either satisfactory, acceptable, or unsatisfactory. And if you read through it, we gave this area for the Suffolk district acceptable, which means there were some minor instances of noncompliance and we did have some minor recommendations to give. So it's still very good. That's what generally, just so you know, that's not a bad thing. That's what most school districts for most areas that we review get, you know. We rarely see unsatisfactory, because that's going to be really bad, and very, very rarely see satisfactory, meaning there was no issues at all. So acceptable is generally where most school districts can fall, just so you know. Okay, so real quickly, so we looked at different areas of the purchasing process, the accounts payable process, and dispersments. So we looked at, you can see on page two, budget management, you know, we just noticed that there were some budget codes that were overspent, and you know, we always say that purchase orders shouldn't go, you shouldn't put through a purchase order unless there's enough room in the budget. And you can see there, including this report, which is, has been updated since we originally did the report, is the district's response. So on the bottom there, you know, it says that, I'll just summarize some of the highlights there, although during an emergency situation, they might issue a purchase order before we complete the transfer, but it's an unusual occurrence, and the one exception is salaries. And I know that from many other districts, that you have to make transfers for salaries often, and as it states here, you're going to wait until the end of the year to do the transfers. That's fine. These are just recommendations we give, and we understand not every recommendation is going to be, you know, implemented by the district, because it's not cost benefit, or you know, just the time involved sometimes is just too much, too great to, for the benefit received. So that's fine, the response is fine. I mean, all the responses that are listed in this letter are more than adequate. On page three, we have the vendor listing, so we found there were numerous vendors that were, had not been active for many years, but they weren't, you know, they weren't, they should be removed from the list. In other words, every, every year or so, or at least, at least once a year, the district should review its vendor listing and remove any vendors that's no activity, it's just a good internal control. And if you read the district's response, it said that that task is completed, August of 2017. Then on the bank reconciliations, we noticed there were some old outstanding checks that hadn't been written off. Again, this happens frequently when you go to different school districts. And also, the capital fund bank account had a negative balance, but you know, and obviously, as an internal control, as an internal auditor, we don't like to see negative balances, obviously. But if you read the district's response, you know, that they do write off the outstanding checks, it's more or less, I think, do it on a manual basis, so they haven't done it yet for the year. As of June 2017, they had done that, and the capital fund was just, was due to some confusion, as it says, the last sentence, the second last sentence on the page, was just a confusion, that someone's smart bond, money came through, I guess. So, you know, understandable. Okay, under number four, page four, you said credit cards. Again, there's no problem with credit cards, but we just recommend that as many policies can be written, that's, you know, the better, the more written the controls are of the district, the better controls are for the district. So in this case, the credit cards have a limit of $25,000. The policy didn't address what the limit should be, and that may be fine, so we're just recommending that, that policy, you know, be looked at and should really have in writing what you want your permit to be. And so the district's response is that it's going to be reviewed by the policy committee. Then we have cash dispersment testing. We found some paid bills, or we found that one instance of paid bill where the PO was created after the purchase, after the purchase goes. And obviously, the purchase order should be, go through prior to, you know, expenditure for that goods or physical service. So, and if you look under the district's response, I know I'm going fast, so slow me down if, if there's any questions. It just says, in the district's response, we're dealing with a claims order, the department that seemed to not be following the policy and speaking to them, and so they're dealing with that. But obviously, I don't think it's that common of an area, but we did find an instance, so we'll mention that. On page five, claims forms, so we were looking back at the packets and found instances where claims forms were used instead of purchase orders. You know, we like to see purchase orders being used as much as possible, sometimes that's not always effective to do though. And so, the district's response, the main areas we do not use purchase orders are for travel, mileage, Medicare reimbursement, and you know, the policy works well for the district and they're not going to change that, and that, again, is fine. We did look at some other areas that we just mentioned the rest of the letter. You know, we reviewed the permissions that, you know, for employees to see that who's limited, or who has rights and can get into different programs, and if they sure shouldn't, so we kind of reviewed that, the rights and obligations of those using the system for financial purposes. We looked at the internal claims auditors, the warrants that they're being properly certified and approved by the claims auditor. We looked at wire transfers, see that process is going, with the bid process, to see that that's proper, and a few other things are noted. So that's it, real quickly, that was the area for the purchasing accounts payable and cash dispersments. Any other questions?
Yeah, for you, and this one first, and then the other one. So my questions are really going to be for administration, in regards to a few of these. A lot of them, best to address on questions, do Dr. Adams or?
Maybe Teresa.
Okay. Under the bank reconciliations, you state that you do the, you act manually, is that right?
No, 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 no. Right on the checks.
You review them?
No, no, we do the bank reconciliations every month. They're actually in the part of the treasury's report, but what I said was that we don't write off the checks until the end of the year.
Right, you do them on, you review outstanding checks on an annual basis?
Yes.
Are you looking to change that policy at all, do it more frequently, or you're happy with what's new?
It's not really that many, we're not talking about a ton, so truthfully, no, I'm not. I mean, that's something we want to look at, but for me, no, I wouldn't be interested in that.
Okay.
We're not talking about a ton of checks, but you know, we're not.
Ten?
Probably.
Okay.
Most of them occur, you know, we could have more probably in the payroll area, we have Medicare people, that they'll only send in their forms, and I don't like to really cancel the checks until we know we have all the paperwork for these people, that they're legitimately entitled to the checks, and a lot of times we reissue them, but you know, a lot of times we're waiting on paperwork. I would say probably the majority of that. Sometimes people won't pay, cash their payroll checks, which is always quite interesting to me. But we wind up rewriting some of them as well, so usually once a year.
Okay. Credit cards, that's going to go to policy?
We were just going to ask the policy committee to review it, see if they want to actually accept the $25,000.
Okay, so that's, that's underway.
We haven't done it yet? We've got the next policy.
Okay.
Yep, that's fine, I just wanted to know that it's in progress.
Got it.
Your issues with the cash dispersment, that you seem to have occurring problems with enforcing?
Oh, the purchase order?
Yeah.
Okay, so that, definitely, we've had that problem, we actually had the state look at that problem years ago, and we've cleaned it up a lot. But there's just some times, and what, I, from going back to the departments and going back to them and saying, you know, what's the issue here? Why does this happen? A lot of them say they'll call up, they'll ask for information on an order or pricing, and then they'll, when they invoice them, they'll invoice them that day, you know, not waiting for when they actually get the purchase order. So some of it is that it's not really the district or the people doing the wrong thing. Sometime, I mean, little things happen here and there, there's little emergencies, you know, I don't know, what they need, you know, we try to put a few blanket purchase orders on, which we don't like to do, because we don't want, you know, give people the opportunity, but we may be at the hardware store or home, someplace where they might have to run in and get some kind of emergency thing. So we definitely lower them. The biggest two areas, truthfully, are buildings and grounds and athletics, they might have a, I mean, they don't find out that they're going to a championship until the last minute. Well, we were, you know, we've already done purchasing, you know, the day or whatever, and now we've got to make out a check for them, and then, you know, the purchase order goes on out there, so.
So, so do you feel there's still room for approval?
Absolutely, there always is. I agree with that, and I'm probably, Mark, I won't pour words in your mouth, but I bet you see that everywhere.
Oh yeah, we do, you know, it's never perfect, you just want to see, I mean, especially, we take a sample, we don't allow us to look at 100% of the population. And so we could have taken a sample and very easily not come across one of them, because I don't think it's the norm, I think it's more the, you know, not the norm, but we do see that many districts do.
And you see them from the claims report that you get, she'll show.
Right, but I just wanted to know if there's room for improvement.
Absolutely.
Okay, so.
Always is, but we, and we do try, we do try, we work, we've sent, we've sent out emails, we've talked to the different departments, but there's some that are never, you know, just not going to be done.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, some of my questions, thank you.
Good job.
Can we move on to the next report?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so the next report was the risk assessment update, and that is, you know, it's essayed in the letter, but you should have read it. It is required under the five-point plan, under education law, that the districts, you know, most districts within reason, have to comply with the internal audit function, and having a risk assessment update each year is part of that requirement. And so you met the first part of the requirement, by having this done. So with the risk assessment update, we're looking over everything real quickly, we're looking at the different areas. In the original five-point plan, that was put out by, you know, many years ago now, they had 17 areas, and that's why we have, if you look on pages four and five, there is 17 areas that we, that we have, but that's where, we didn't make these areas up, we probably did additional areas, especially if the district wanted us to add the areas in the future, but these areas actually came from education law that was put into place years ago. Okay, so we basically, you know, provide this to the district as a tool to help the, in this case, the audit committee, help, you know, management decide what area to choose. And you'll see on pages four and five, the 17 areas that I mentioned, they all get, they all get rated as either low, moderate, or high for a high risk. High obviously being something that's more subject to misappropriation, theft, whatever. This report made that classification even, if it wasn't misappropriation. Anyway, so we have on here, there is six areas that we determined to be high, okay? And just to give you a little background, like payroll is one of them, but we did the, we did the internal review of payroll for the district in 2016, had set this number 11. And you have good controls over payroll, but payroll is just what we call inherently a high-risk area. So just because the nature of the transactions, the volume of the transactions, the dollars involved, possibility of ghost phantom employees, it goes on, so that's just going to be a high-risk area regardless of how good the controls are. So I'm just bringing that to your attention, that even if you have very good controls, it's still going to be considered a high-risk area. So in the past, the, you know, since we've been doing the services, the internal audit services for the district, we've done purchasing this past year, and then two years ago, we did, in 2016, we did the payroll area, as we say here. So additional areas that we were considering high are cash receipts, and your fixed assets, and your extra classroom activity funds. So they're all considered high-risk areas, they're, you know, this is all very subjective, you know, the board or management may have their own feelings that certain areas are higher, or an area that's not even on this list if you'd like to look at. I mean, we have districts, many times, we provide a similar schedule to them, and they choose something that's not even on here, so that's well within your right to do. Of the ones that we selected as high though, I would probably, I've talked to Teresa too about this, and I think we would agree, extra classroom makes sense to probably be, I think you're right, extra classroom makes sense to probably be the next area to look at, because I think it's a much higher risk area than your fixed assets and the cash receipts process. I think that would be it, but again, I'm just throwing it out there, you don't have to choose extra classroom, that's food for thought. So, but that's generally what we, what we go through.
Just so you know why we talk about extra classrooms, I went to a state program in the fall, and they were speaking, I went to something where they were reviewing audits, and it seemed like the state is really looking at a lot of extra classroom audits. And then over the years, we've had, we've been referred from different problems, we've solved the half of it, we've solved the dispersment part, because now our internal auditor, I'm sorry, our claims auditor looks at all of dispersment, but still the cash receipt part, that maybe we could tighten up a little bit before the state comes in here. So that was my thought about, you know, why we want to do extra classrooms, they said the state is really starting to do a lot of extra classroom.
Do you remember the last time we did the extra classroom?
Probably about four or five, I think, five years ago. We made some changes, so that's why we thought, you know, let's look at it again. That's when we made those changes, at four years sounds about right, but now that March started, so a new set of eyes, a total new set of eyes.
So since the audit committee is a committee of the whole, should we, or can we set aside time at either the next meeting or the following to discuss this further and conclude a decision on what we want to do for the following?
When is, is there a timeframe when you would need what?
Well, you want, you want to have this done by the end of the school year, so we would need time to come in prior to, you know, June 30th. So, but it doesn't, I don't need to know tonight, so it's really, sooner than later.
When's that due?
April 2. But yeah, I mean.
No later than April 10?
Excuse me?
No later than April 10, because would that be okay?
Oh, that'd be great.
April 10 is the next meeting, so at least.
Yeah, that's fine, because I know, I mean, the meetings after that I know become, you know, longer, right.
Well, on this hand, we'll have it before the regular meeting, add more time.
Yeah, that's.
But your recommendation, based upon what you've seen and this report here, is to do the?
Yeah, I think so. We see, I mean, I don't know, because I don't know particularly myself, what your district does, but we do see a lot of times that that's where the most problems are in any district. It seems like that's always the problem in that area.
And Teresa, would be your recommendation as well?
Yes, it would be, because of the state also, because I don't think we did it since Craig and the high school. Aline was here, who we did the last, and I'm not sure Craig was.
Okay.
And there's a bit of money blowing for that, it's important, maybe it's for them.
Right, right. Any questions, anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you. And if not, you support, you know, latest would be April 11, because you have a meeting at night.
That is right.
He's busy till the 15th.
Yeah.
Yes. It's like the 17th. They squeezed the 17th.
17th, 18th is fine.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, appreciate it, it was a lot of work, it's just these.
Thanks.
Thank you. Matt, as chair of the audit committee, just let me know how much time you think we'll need, and then I'll back it up towards your next meeting. Okay, 1.09, minutes of the regular meeting of March 6, 2018, chairman intends to set those minutes as associated?
Uh, my god.
Second, Clark.
I have, I have a discussion about the minutes.
Do you have the minutes?
Yeah.
Oh, you can't.
I can.
Do you want it on second? Okay, discussion.
Discussion?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a printout of the minutes and a couple of things are missing in March 6th, so. Minutes show deputy superintendent arriving at the beginning of the meeting, deputy superintendent did not participate in executive session, therefore minutes are misleading. It should be noted when deputy as well as board members, as has been in the past, arrive and leave, because that's been the practice. We know our eyes are on the bar chair of the living room, like when Teresa left early, it should, the minutes showed that, so that means correct.
He was here when the story started, right?
I'm sorry?
He was here when the meeting started.
Yes, but not in executive session. And also, I believe, I believe deputy left before inclusion of public session.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think, not that everybody who's here necessarily, who would be required to be in executive session would be considered to have left the meeting.
Well, they're technically not in the meeting, so we need to note, arrive on the portrait as we have them passed.
Does anybody have an issue with leaving Steve in there as, I mean, I don't know if he was in executive, I don't remember.
He was not.
But he was here during the start of the meeting, and then we went to executive, and he stayed there.
So if anyone misses executive session, we know, I'm sorry, but I was just going to say past precedence, if we know person arriving at the beginning of whenever they arrived and leaving when they had to.
Okay, is any board or administration with leaving Steve there? Steve may want to.
When we're done in the past, we just got to make sure we do it the same way.
Excuse me.
Wait, hold on.
The part of the minutes that say who's at the meeting, it's just who's at the meeting, not who's in executive session.
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm splitting.
Dr. Adams left, it's just the board members, who comes in and adds to executive session, or Dr. Adams, not that Dr. Adams is double up the meeting, but that would be the only thing, but that doesn't mean including executive session.
Once, when one of us arrives late, we know that we are, yeah.
Just the board.
But, you know, they're listed, so past, past precedence.
And that's really for form purposes, so, but.
I think we need to be accurate, Ava was in the room and who wasn't, just.
Not we in the room, it's who's here at this, well, we begin.
And also, when we've left in the past, if Teresa had to leave or Clark had to leave, we've noted that in the minutes we've stopped.
Okay, so does anybody, aside from the one?
And that's not the only issue.
Does anybody else have an issue with just leaving Steve's name there, because that's, he was here during the meeting, I don't have an issue with it. It's good that that in the past, we've never taken anybody out, even if they did or did not attend, we don't put people in here who attended.
If you look at past minutes, we do. We, we.
I worry about everybody's opinion. So, does anybody have an issue with leaving his name in?
No, I don't have that.
Alright, and your next, your next one?
We just explained.
Thank you.
We are noted when we leave.
Right, we've been noted when we leave, yeah.
That's what you just said, it's noted that we leave, not administration.
Okay, so the next?
So the next issue is that it was a motion at the meeting, and a vote that are missing from the minutes.
Okay, which one was that?
The motion to include the advocacy committee report is missing from the minutes.
It is on the somewhere, so. Andrew, do you want to?
Yes.
No, it's on your cell or your line?
Oh, it's here, under 2.10.
Page three.
Oh, page three, 2.10.
2.10 is a motion opposing pilots to assess, 2.10, that's where I have, 2.10.
At the bottom of, at the, after 2.10, there's a motion to board of education, author the agenda to include the advocacy committee report and the nomination. voted by Ronnie, said he was by Clark.
Okay, so that, does it get a number?
No, no.
It's going to say with the vote?
Because if you give it a number, you're actually altering the agenda.
Right.
So it's on the agenda. So the vote is there, but you can't, because then you're going to change the numbers.
It's under resolution 2.10.
You can't change everything that comes past it, and that's not.
Sorry, you would change what?
You're changing the numbers of everything that comes after it.
Or it gets added at the bottom, like you did.
Right, but you're not, you shouldn't add the number, because the agenda's already set. Wait, does everybody have the?
Now it is under resolution opposing pilots and assess state-owned lands.
It's only there because, it's not included in that, it's only underneath that, because that's when the motion is made. So the motion is there, there is another order, do you have an issue with that?
Uh, one second, yes, and then the report is not listed under the reports. So it got added, we voted to add it, and then it's not listed at all that it happened.
Because you can't alter the agenda.
Of course you can, we have, we have, we don't adopt the agenda, we don't adopt We don't adopt the agenda and we take.
Well, their agenda is by policy, so we can't adopt.
Right, and therefore, our policy does not dictate that we adopt the agenda and ask for. As per the committee on open government and open annual, any board member can amend the agenda to add a new item, which is exactly what I have.
Our policy for different stuff, but I'm not going to get into that.
Yeah, so anyway, it should be a separate, I'm sorry, it should be a separate vote listed with a separate item, but also the actual. All it is, is adding an item, add it to committee report, which is currently missing.
Okay, so is there, does anybody have an issue with the way they are so stated as in?
It doesn't state that we reported.
Can I just please ask one of you, that the, the way it's amended, the way it's stated here, that there was an emotion to add advocacy. Is there anybody who has an issue with that or was on the poll vote? I don't know what the question, all of the favors signify by saying aye.
The committee report took place, so it's very interesting that the report took place, though we don't say that it did. Where's the report? We missed administrative reports. Why don't we left the Board of Education report?
It's in the vote.
Yes, in the law, which, why we did in the past, it's always listed in the minutes. So again, past precedence, we listed it in the minutes. That's the position. We didn't have it established, so we're having it now.
Okay.
It doesn't even say it on the report.
Can we call the question? Okay, I'm sorry, you have.
It's been changed.
All of the favors signify by saying aye.
Well, also, people weren't at the meeting.
Who wasn't at the meeting last night? Teresa? Oh, Paul. Okay.
I've got, I'm still, I'm not clear on, on the report, on what we're.
Can you table the minutes?
I don't. Okay, so.
Because I thought, because I initially thought that that wasn't, that it wasn't in the minutes that.
Right, but it is, so was that an issue there?
Right, and it is there, so now I'm just unclear about the report aspect of it.
Right, but there was no reporting attached, so.
We never record attached to the report.
So she wants to attach, because attach to actually report what was read.
Placehold. The title, advocacy committee report.
All right, listen, I'm not going to believe this. We got a lot.
We can table it.
All we'll do is, we're going to, we're going to, you're okay with it, okay. If I, do I have to vote for yes? Otherwise, we'll table it. Matt, yes. Thomas, yes. And I vote yes, so we'll, Monty, you can vote, or of course.
Are you trying to vote? Please let everyone vote for yourselves. Yes, probably let everyone vote. Matt, yes. Clark, yes. We don't vote that way, so.
Tommy, you're, you're standing because you were attached, wait, Paul.
Yes.
You have the mustache, you just got me.
No, 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 you can get used to calling me Tom, so it's fine.
I, I vote yes, but I just want to make sure that, that it's done, if this is what we've always done it, because I don't, I don't know.
You can't vote on it and then it's done. It has to be. We can table it and vote on it next time.
Okay, so it's, it's, it's passed for, can I say upstanding, nay, and false stating. Okay. All right, um. 1.10, super tennis, sorry guys. Super tennis comments. We're going to start with the police department. All right, we have a special presentation today with respect to, I know this is on the super tennis comment, with respect to the police departments. So despite the fact that Chief here is Vice President of the Board, we're going to rip him off that title right now. And he's going to go on the other side of the table and do some things, so.
And just to preface this, you know, the last board meeting, we talked about our security audit, audit from NISER. And one of the things that's really important in there is to reaffirm our relationship with our police departments. And it's something that we take for granted because we see the police in our schools each and every day. At the high school, I think Officer Lynch was here earlier, I don't know, yeah, he's still here. And we have a school resource officer that rotates through the middle school. SPD is at Connor because that's their area school. But both police departments have been phenomenal with our school district, great conversations. And we very much value the relationship that we have with our police department, so I'm looking forward to. Board member and Chief Osborne presenting, and I don't know if it will be Lieutenant Hyman or if it's Chief Wydell. But the town around Ho will, are you guys going to jump in in the middle of this, or? Chief?
Thank you, Dr. Adams, and thank you to my fellow board members, and, okay, it's all this festival this side of the table. I'm going to stay over here and watch. Let's go. But thank you, thanks everybody. We, I just wanted to sort out and introduce some of our department members over here. We have our Mayor of Deville to Suffolk, retired police officer, Ed Markoudis. We have Lieutenant Andy Lockwood, Lieutenant John Mallon, Sergeant Jim G. Natino, we have our K-9 officer, Luvendrini, and we have Officer Angie York. All instrumental in the work that we do in schools and the work that we do every day. Our police department forms to the little back of the meeting took. In April of 1896, we are the oldest continuous police department in Rockland County. We currently have 29 officers, a total of 35 employees that are responsible for policing the village of Suffolk. I'm blessed and privileged to be chief at this department for the past, going into my 14th year. And I've sat as board for the past 13, the past few years as Vice President, so. Guys said I don't mind deciding, it's pretty cool, I'm actually. So we just need to go through some basic things we do. Our department is pretty active in our schools, pretty active in the community, and we do a lot of community-based policing, particularly in our schools. We work closely with the town of Ramapo on safety plans, contingency plans. And when emergencies occur, we'll be doing an active shooter drill together with the Ramapo Police Department in the near future. Because the reality is, no matter what school in our district has an incident, we're going, they're going, probably my ones coming, by which side of the county one. Probably Spring Valley, the areas that surrounds. The next thing I just want to talk about, just to get into the basics of what we've done, is something I'm, I guess it's near and dear to me. And that is the dare program. I was the first dare officer myself in a district in 1993. I was training in Saratoga Springs, New York. I taught the dare program for four schools for 10 years, on badge number 35 hundred students. There was an excellent program, it still is an active program. Our current program has gone through a couple of changes through Dare America and through, through the organizations. When I first started teaching there, for 17 week program, it's down to a technical program. But you can still get a lot done. It's a great program, a lot of good things, a positive program. Off of the dare program, we have a lot of community things that we do, which I'm going to explain very simply. I'm going to keep this short and to the point. We talked about safety before I get into all the different programs. Because safety is obviously, and going to our schools and making sure if something does happen, we are prepared. That is a critical, critical piece of policing, particularly in our department in Ramapo. This vehicle right here is called the bear. It is housing Suffolk. It is an armored vehicle. It is part of the Rockland County React SWAT team, which we have a detective sergeant who is a team leader. Detective Sergeant Mick Marsh is in charge of team leader operations, big SWAT operations. Our K-9 officer, Luvendrini, is the SWAT K-9. I'm very fortunate to be chairman of the Chiefs Committee, which oversees the SWAT team operations. And we have been part of this team since 2003. And the reason I bring it up, as to Ramapo, we all trained for these unfortunate events that may occur. We train with this team once, a few days a month, I'll leave it at that, and a few weeks during the year for anticipation of critical incidents occurring. Critical incident could be anything. They were called out Sunday night to the town attorney board for a barricaded suspect armed. And fortunately, the suspect was taken into custody. They train for school incidents, and God forbid a school shooting, active shooter. This team is highly trained with several different positions. You have entry officers, you have explosive breachers, which we have, you have snipers, you have entry teams, every possible part of the SWAT team, we have in this team. So we hope we never need it. We like to bring this to the schools so the kids can climb through it and have fun. And that's what it should be used for right now. But if it's needed, there's an armored vehicle for this team to respond 24/7, 20/65 days a year to our community and our surrounding communities to assist with any incident we have. So any questions again, please feel free. Now, going into our dare stuff in our community bombing, this is the picture of our championship dare hockey team last year. We have a street hockey league formed in 1997. And in 1997, we started this to try to get kids in our downtown, off the street. We played indoor for the first few years. The league got so big, we were hoping to get 40 kids to play. We got seven in the first year, and I think that was a premonition of Thanksgiving. Our current league has 24 teams just from Suffolk Central School District. Hundreds of kids, I have 40 volunteer coaches and as well as support staff. We built the ring for community donations and your chat dive. Our league is a fall league for younger kids, a spring league for the older kids. It is an awesome league, even a high school kids who are playing, going to play college sports. Playing in our league as seniors is awesome. I think one of the funniest things I read, I think I told Dr. Adams, is it was one of the Oliveto brothers who graduated, he was like a state chef and wrestler. And he gets interviewed by Journal News about his wrestling career going on. And he said, what are you looking to do with 40 all season? And he says, I can't wait to play the hockey. And the Journal, I thought that was the coolest part because he was having fun. He wanted to be a kid, but had fun. So this league has kept our kids out, involved, pulls our community together. And Dr. Adams filled in last year for one game and got a win, am I correct?
That's correct.
Got a win, so showed up one day, we hit the country, jumped in, and D1. So we appreciate all of that. What you're involved with at our school, for the past 27 years, we've been coordinating and running a toy drive. Why I bring it up? Because all of our Suffolk Central students are involved in it. There's a pumpkin volunteers, they use toy drive. We collect thousands and thousands of toys. We have a massive, massive network of people that help us out and that continually help us out. We assist children, rather district, needy families. We sponsor families. We have people that really need, if we pick out of 20 families that are the most needy, we sponsor them with food, clothing, as well as toys. And that's just one piece of it. There is a community center, which really probably is more than a Toys R Us in it at holiday times. And we take a month to work, and anybody still in the scene, it would take a month to do this toy drive. And it is a massive community. Why I bring it up again, our kids help us day in and day out with this toy drive. Getting our students involved, getting to know us in a non-forced role. A non-forced role, and the rest of people working in the community, getting involved. We also just, we discussed this last year, our Lisa baskets. We get it for our local students. I spoke to several of the schools today. So I probably have to collect around 90 to 100 baskets, which we'll get. Biggest problem I have with these is I can't leave them out because I'm going to leave them out on the midnight tour. I see the plastic. I looked at that, I listened, I looked good yesterday, but I'll see if you can, I'll see like a little Easter bunny move there. So I walk in my office, we provide our students and other students, bring this to us to help their fellow students, so that'll be the program. Barbecue, we did this last year, the first time we walked into the school. That's a mountain crew there. We're all about 100 pounds of weight in that picture. I started stretching out. I realized that we're, yeah, stretching, and these guys are like, what are you doing to us? I'm stretching out. Think we all have burgers that, it looks like. But we had 800 hamburgers and tacos for every kid in common, all the parents, anybody that came. Great, great day it was, and we plan on doing it again, once again, working with kids in our community. We have our pool party for us students. We have DJ, barbecue pool party, awesome time, I've been nice to, cream trucking for the kids. So the kids get to know us once again. When we walk through the school, we do school walkthroughs every single day. I have officers every day walking through. And these guys will test the first couple of times we started dealing with them. See, kids would come out, they'd look a little suspiciously, see what's going on. Now they come out, high five us, they hug you. They're so used to seeing us every single day at school. And that is critical in policing, to see officers, the non-forced involved, and what we do every day. So we're playing this for this year, ready? This picture here, this is near and dear to these pictures. And this is of our Christmas parade, which I work with the mayor on. Why I put this up? Because hundreds and hundreds of our students participate in this parade. That is a great picture, it was taken last year at the Christmas parade, which draws thousands and thousands. And it brings our community and our whole district together for something positive in this massive parade. And I bring it again because those are all our kids doing something positive through the police department, as well as recreation and with the mayor. So these are some of the things that we are very active in. We do tours, we did a station tour yesterday. That is of the SWAT that came to community center that comes down, Pat, 94, had Suffolk. And we showed them the SWAT robot. We have robots with the SWAT team. I used it for about two minutes, I ran it through the wall, stepped away from it, didn't go well. The kids are much better at it, the Joe and stuff. Do you stop it? I was smashing, they didn't go well. We had one that climbed through stairs, which we actually used a barricaded situation. Last year, we sent two robots in, able to hit the door, but send them in with cameras to see what's going on, instead of sending officers in. So that's a demonstration. We just did another one yesterday. Off Salud did a great job yesterday with the daisies or camera station yesterday. And our two dare vehicles. I love these. They're two extreme. That would be on the road going to smoke to log the truck. That is a F-150 police truck, don't eat it, but automatically Ford. Probably a $50,000 truck. It is an absolute beast in the weather. The other one is a Corvette, 1970 Corvette, seized as a result of arrest by Luvendrini, who is that. The damn Corvette is a T-top, the roots come off. It has a, basically sounds like a NASCAR coming in the road. And it is an awesome vehicle, bring it to schools, we show. So the kids will pull into schools with those vehicles, get along. And finally, one last thing I just want to mention, I promised the kids I would not make pictures of the dare indexes. The kids are like, don't show these. I'll take a picture like, no, I won't. We have dare indexes using tennis between 200 to 350 kids. Basically four or five of your, last one was last Friday night. So we're very active. We enjoy working Ramapo police, we're going to come up next. The bottom line is, we work with them, they work with us, we have a very good relationship with this school district. And I want to thank you, Dr. Adams, and everybody for this opportunity. Honestly, I think after 13 years of, I don't think I've ever sat in this side, but come over here, I'll leave you walk over to it. Mark Markoudis, if you want to say anything real quick, you just, for the audience of our, our mayors and the town police officer, thank you.
Thank you, um, thank you, boy. First and foremost, really, what we're talking about here is the safety and security of our students, of our faculty, our staff, and our village residents. And I want to thank the Police Department of Suffolk and Ramapo for working together to provide that safe environment. And I want to ensure to you, to the family members, that they have our full support in the village of Suffolk. From the mayor's office on down. So thank you, thank you, Ramapo, and thank you, Chief.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. My last question, it'll be shot, we're going to reach out, so on our offbeat avenue, we take pride in our village, look at us, man. Thank you, everybody.
Lieutenant Hyman, are you up next?
Yes.
You don't want to come back over there, I think you said, what are you doing? I like the stereo here.
I'm Lieutenant Hyman. I'm an administrative lieutenant at Town Ramapo Police Department. Part of my duties as the administrative lieutenant is overseeing school-based programs in Town Ramapo. Today with me, I have Sergeant Howell. He's my sergeant that directly supervises the programs. I have two SROs, Officer Dodgeall and Officer Lynch, that you, most of you know Officer Lynch from Suffolk High School. Officer Navarro and Officer Small are our newest dare officers. I want to thank you for allowing me to present here tonight. I know you have a busy agenda. We do value the partnership that we have with you. Over the years, I've had a lot of conversations with people from the school district, whether it be administrators, faculty, staff. We find that they don't always understand the full sculpted programs that we offer here in Town Ramapo. So tonight I want to reinforce what we do for the school district and hopefully I can express the importance of what we are doing. First formal contacts that we have with your students are in the AdoptaCop program. We are in the elementary schools, first grade, second grade, third grade, and fourth grade in the, in the Suffolk Central School District. The AdoptaCop program, we teach these kids subjects such as when to dial 911, safety issues, self-esteem. We talk to them about police being your friends. We, we've been in existence, the AdoptaCop program, since 1989, so we're in our 30th year of AdoptaCop right now. The program is still going strong. It was developed and designed by the Town Ramapo Police Department with the assistance of some educators in the county. And we are really proud of doing that program and our officers love doing it. We have 10 officers assigned to the AdoptaCop program throughout our police department, within both districts. We reach the fifth graders with our dare program. We're proud to say that we have five fully certified, qualified dare officers. Four of them are currently teaching now, as I said, two recently graduated, the Dare America program. I was up at their graduation. They are proud, they're happy to be dare officers, and we're getting very positive feedback from the program that they are teaching. Our officers are all certified, not only in elementary school, but also to teach the middle school and the high school. Right now, we are teaching the elementary school program called Keeping it Real. 10 lessons, all with the same theme, which is to have these kids make responsible choices, both at home, in. both at home, in school, and throughout life. They teach lessons such as responsible decision-making, understanding others. Also, there is, with the opioid crisis in this country, if you go on the Dare America website, they don't teach it to the fifth grade. But if you have a child and you want to share information about this opioid situation, they have a great lesson plan right on the Dare America website right now that you can take a look at, and it might help you know what to say to your children about that. Back in the 90s, when we started dare, it was one officer doing it. Now, obviously, we have numerous officers doing dare. His name was Officer Schwartz. He retired as a detective. And he had his master's degrees going for his doctorate. And he was approached by the New York State Division of Children and Family Services. They wanted to send him to the first-ever school resource officer training in the state of New York. This is before anybody even knew what a school resource officer was. 1995. He came back as the first certified SRO in Rockland County. And he, right now, as you know, we have SROs in both of our high schools, therefore within the Town Ramapo's primary jurisdiction. The Ramapo High School and Suffolk High School. An SRO is pretty much an encyclopedia, pretty much of resources. There is a primary purpose why we have an SRO in your school, and that is to make sure your schools are safe. We want to provide a safe learning environment for these children. But the SRO kind of wraps up all our other programs. We started with Adopt a Cop, then Dare, now we have the SROs. The children already are comfortable with the police officers at that point. I tell you right now, you have a former SRO sitting on your Board of Education right now, and he will probably agree with me on this. There are things that kids will tell the SROs that they will not even tell their teachers or their parents. And we value that relationship with the children. We also have, well, let me back up. Last week, I stood side by side with Dr. Adams and Mr. Walker when the children walked out of Suffolk High School. And I gotta tell you, I was so impressed, because as those children filed back into the school, they all said hello to the administrators, they thanked the police for being there. And this is really a testament to how this school district interacts with the children. And your support of the police in the schools helps us as well. So we do appreciate that. We would not be able to do these programs if we didn't have the support of our town board and our police chief. Both Chief Wydell and our entire board are fully on board with what we do in the schools. And they support the programs. Without their support, frankly speaking, we would not be there. So I want to thank them as well. We also hosted a whole bunch of different programs out of the police department. One program is our youth academy. Our youth academy is in our 39th session right now, our 20th year. We have 34 children in our youth academy. These are high school-aged children. They're referred to the program by their SROs. So if anybody is interested, or you know anybody that might be interested, please refer them to the SRO. We expose them to a variety of law enforcement topics. A detective from Ramapo takes them through a murder investigation. K-9 officer talks to them about the importance of our K-9 program. They learn about tactics that are performed on vehicle stops. That's probably their favorite lesson, because they actually get to sit behind a police car and pull over actors who are our police officers, who are acting as motorists. So they get to understand better why police do sometimes what they do when the public doesn't understand it. They finally learn and understand that. This is all taught by the Ramapo Police Department detectives and police officers, and of course, we bring in some guest speakers to teach the children. It is overseen by my sergeant, Sergeant Howell. So any questions on this, you can certainly speak to Sergeant Howell. Also, our school-based police officers are very involved with our youth academy. We also host the youth court. The youth court is nine years in existence right now. Centers on Juvenile Delinquency Prevention, and also youth justice and advocacy. The students take on five roles. They take on the role of a judge, prosecutor, defense attorney, bailiff, and court clerk. They learn how a court operates. But they don't just learn this, they actually participate in adjudicating cases. We take cases that have gone into the family court. The student who got in trouble, the parent, and the police officer enter into a civil agreement that they will abide by what this youth judge decides what their sentence will be. The only way this case goes back to the family court is if they get in trouble again before it's adjudicated, or they don't complete their sentence handed down by the youth judge. The family court comes in and teaches. The probation department, our detectives, our sergeants, and our police officers, and they instruct these kids on how to operate a courtroom. 13 years old to 18 years old. Anyone that's interested in our program, if you know somebody that's interested, you can refer them to Sergeant Samarone or Detective Peter Luzan. By the way, the Rockland County Youth Bureau has said that the Ramapo Police Youth Court is well-conducted and administered, so they like our program. So now the kids go off and they graduate, and they go off to college. We don't leave them. We now have our intern program, many years in existence. It's a paid summer program for full-time, reticulated college students. At this point, you must be in a criminal justice major or police science. You need to be interested in law enforcement. It allows these kids to assess the law enforcement career and decide if it's right for them. We take a maximum of eight students, they cannot have a felony conviction, and they get exposed to things such as physical fitness tests, our K-9 program, police administration, clerical, by the way, we put them to work. So they actually work, they get paid, they do work for their money. We have some off-site visits where we bring them to the jail, we bring them to the medical examiner's office. So they learn a whole variety of things that happen in law enforcement. And they can really make an educated decision at that point if that's the direction they want to take. Sergeant Giadina is our intern coordinator. Any questions, I would refer you to her. Detective Dennis Proctor from the Ramapo Police runs our Police Athletic League, which is designed to combat juvenile delinquency and community deterioration. We do this through academic support, mentoring, and recreational activities. It is a collaboration of police, teachers, parents, and coaches who want to engage with these children in positive activities. They run a variety of programs, not concurrent with the school program of the same sport. They do basketball, wrestling, softball, volleyball, flag football, crew, cheerleading, strength and conditioning. PAL is a nonprofit organization. They are on Facebook, so you can go and look up what they're doing. It's P-A-L of Ramapo. Any questions, see Detective Proctor or call Detective Proctor at the police department. Our members of patrol also play a very large role in our schools. Our K-9 officer in the K-9 unit, Andre Sanchez and Rookie, they frequently stop by variety schools, usually the younger classes, and they meet with the kids. As a matter of fact, they just stopped by a couple of weeks ago in pre-K class in the district. And a parent from that class posted on our Facebook page that my son came home and said he had the best day ever after meeting K-9 Rookie and Officer Sanchez. So they too have an impact on these children. March 3rd STEAM Expo, I was there on duty. Chief of Police came there on duty. Officer Sanchez, K-9 unit, was there from the beginning to the finish of the program. And while I was there, I saw numerous off-duty Ramapo police officers that were in the building. So you have a very large presence of the Ramapo Police at your events and in your schools at any given time. We have one of four drug recognition experts in the county, Sergeant Youngman. He's already been approached by numerous schools within the East Ramapo Central School District to teach in their health classes. He sees the brand-new drugs that are out on the road, he knows about them. Some of these are so dangerous, you'd have no idea. Give him a call. Have the teachers call him. He will come into the health classes. He will share this information with the kids and explain how dangerous. Some of these drugs, if you touch, they will go right through your skin and could cause very dangerous effects. So please utilize these resources. This Thursday, Books vs. Badges, the Spring Valley Police and the Ramapo Police are playing students at the Suffolk High School, again. I'm sorry, at the Spring Valley High School. Another opportunity for our police officers to interact with these children, make them more comfortable with the police, so that they will share things when they need to be shared with the police officers. And finally, our regular patrol officers. I like to think of them as completing the circle of our total commitment to your schools and to your students. 2017, 3,600 school-based community policing reports were taken from Town Ramapo police officers. This includes school security checks, walking through the schools, school bus safety checks. We don't only do this when the schools are open. I was the midnight lieutenant for the last four years. I'm telling you, my midnight officers were checking the schools every single night. Because we want to find out if something's wrong before your staff gets there, before your kids get there. And we do. If you looked at our Facebook page just a couple of weeks ago, we had an officer doing a school security check at one of the schools in the town, and found something where he wound up making an arrest. We don't want things left behind for kids to pick up, so we are checking your schools overnight. And this year alone, three months into the year, as of this morning, 1,300 documented school security check, school-based community policing reports already taken by the Ramapo Police Department. So being here today, really the purpose was, is to educate the board and the public on what we do in the schools. We want you to be aware of it. We want to create this awareness. Because if the parents and the teachers and the students know about what we're doing, you can tap into these resources. We've been doing it for a long time. Officer Donald, he knows that. He lived it with us. As a district, I would like to ask you to share that with people. When you hear about great things that the Ramapo Police Department, Suffolk Police Department do, please share it. Let people know about what we're doing, so that they can utilize the resources. We do have social media, we have Facebook and a Twitter feed, and so do you. But it reaches a different population. So please, share that, so we can raise that awareness and let people know what's going on. Finally, I just want to reassure you that you do have two police departments that police your school district, okay? Understand that the Ramapo Police Department, based upon geography, wherein many of your buildings, with the exception of the Archicona School, suffers in the Archicona School. I will mirror what Chief Osborne said. We have a lot of trust in the Suffolk Police Department, we work very well together. We know they're gonna be there for us. And you guys know, we are gonna be there for you if you need us. And the parents need to know that as well. We work very well together, trained together, and we're there for you. If anybody from the board has any questions, we're glad to take it. If anybody from the community has any questions, certainly this might not be the forum at your meeting, but we're gonna go outside, we will be in the hallway for the next 15, 20 minutes, and we'd be glad to answer any questions from the community as well. Thank you.
Chief, I want to thank you for everything you've done, of course, through my career, and you've got a great lineup of guys, Sergeant Howell, thank you for everything.
Chief, if you don't mind, if you come up for a moment?
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to allow our department to highlight the things that we do. And I also want to reassure everybody that the relationship between our departments is very good. Chief Osborne and I are getting along really well. So that's a good thing. We were just talking out in the hallway, actually, about the active shooter training that we're gonna do. So we appreciate the opportunity to speak today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. I'm not gonna be outside, so.
Just on behalf of the board, seeing all of you guys here, we are so fortunate to have two police departments covering our area. The programs that they do offer are awesome. So much interaction with the kids, which as Chief Osborne said, is so important, where it's, you know, good interactions with the kids. And then they look at you and respect all of you as we do here. Thank you for coming. You're welcome anytime. We look forward to more programs and more collaboration between the district and the departments. Thank you very much. All right. My Clark. Clark, wait. All right, so next we have the Reach Foundation recognition, right?
Yes. Say enough how much I appreciate you staying here. I recognize many of the faces, not all of them, I apologize. But I don't think we've recognized the Reach Foundation in the past, at least formally. And so that's what we'd like to do tonight, and I'd like to read a couple of comments first. The Reach Foundation continues to be a pillar in our community that represents innovation and creative thinking. And if you look at the projects that are sponsored, funded by Reach, you would agree with that statement, or I believe that you would. Our district has greatly benefited from your hard work and dedication to it. I have watched the foundation grow and evolve throughout the years, and our partnership is invaluable. You help our teachers provide their students with innovative learning environments, new ways of thinking, and an outlet to showcase all that they have learned. And a testament to that was back on March 3rd. You had to overcome a lot of obstacles. The storm that happened just before, and then the power being out, and then we get the power restored, and then that morning, the power goes out again. Not all of it, but you know, part of it. But there was, nobody was complaining, at least they didn't complain to me. You were smiling, and just said, "Well, it could have been worse. It could have been the day before when the storm was occurring." So thank you for that attitude. The sense of pride in our students' faces when they are at the STEAM Expo, talking to peers and parents about their projects, learning from each other, and trying new things is amazing to witness. I spent several hours that day with the kids. And it's great to get down on the floor, and they show me how their robots work, or they show me this, or they show me that. And then the art group in the cafeteria. I think the biggest hit was probably the magician, but you know, I enjoyed watching the kids and listening to them explain how their projects worked. We've also provided our art department an outlet and a gallery where the artists can be seen and their works exposed to more and more people. It used to be STEM, and it's now STEAM, and they greatly appreciate that. Congratulations and thank you on increasing the grant budget this year. I believe it went from $10,000 to $15,000, and it allowed for more teachers and classrooms to benefit from these mini projects. And I think this year, 29 maybe, 29 or 30, it's close to that. Not only do the students and teachers that receive the grants benefit, but our entire community benefits. Because they see how the technology is infused into the classrooms and incorporated by our students. And that was especially evident during the STEAM Expo. So I'd like to call you up. I'm asking for help with some of the names, so we'll come up. And I'd like you all to stay up at the front, if you don't mind, and get a picture, if that's okay. So the first person is Ronnie Seif.
Sarah Ofgan. Sarah Bernbach. Big Brown.
Ronnie's on here tonight. Ronnie Silver shall last minute orthodontist.
Oh, um, I want to recognize Jessica Swirloff and Sarah Offgang for taking on the STEAM Expo without their dedication, as well as everyone on this board. We wouldn't be able to put on our, there's 13 board members on the Reach Foundation, and, um, I would be remiss if I didn't thank our parents. I, I did some quick math this morning, and between us, we have 30 children in the district. And without them giving us the opportunity to take some time away from soccer and robotics and everything else they do, we wouldn't be able to do this. But, but most of all, we really have to thank the administration and our teachers because without their buy-in on this idea that we came to them with, Lee Weber and, and Steve Walker, this would never get done. We're thrilled to be able to put back in the community that we live in, and the support that we get from our community makes it happen, so thank you. I thank their families, but our husbands, who's, and help us out, our husbands, and, um, I want to recognize David Swirloff, who came up with an app so he knew how many people came in the door. The first year, he was so, so on it, he had one of those clickers, and he had 1,700 people, and he was clicking away the whole day. My husband Scott Goldstein, all the, all of our partners, um, we, we wouldn't be able to get this done, but our district has bought in. Our teachers are phenomenal. We give out $15,000 of grants. We ask our teachers to bring their grant ideas to us and bring them to the Expo so that everybody else can see them, and it, it truly is a community effort, so, so we say thank you.
If I could say, if I could say a couple words, because I'm going to call her. I approached Dr. Adams probably a month and a half ago about recognizing volunteers, and I didn't want to get too involved with it because I wanted it to be more fun with the administration, because they're at the school every day, obviously, and they, you know, know more pre-volunteers than who knows what. However, um, being that you guys are the first set of volunteers that we're recognizing, couldn't have been more appropriate. The, probably the greatest, if, one of the greatest, if not the greatest partnership that the district has with the community organization. You guys, and passports, because you guys have been in existence for quite some time, have done such great things for us and the district, for our kids, for our families, and this whole STEAM idea was just phenomenal, phenomenal. I know how much work you guys put into it, Social Documents touched on the issues this year with the storms, you know, and again, without complaint that we heard, without any, you know, you just focused and did what you had to do, and it's just so impressive coming from a group of people to have that. So just want to thank you again on behalf of the board and the district. Awesome job, and we look forward to many, many more years of this great partnership. Thank you.
Leave the gown.
Oh, man. She may need that. I don't really use it. Let's go. Where's the police officers? Carson, you can just commit it, don't they? All right, um, thank you. Public participation, this is public participation, action items only. Those are the items that are behind you. 2.01, 2.13, 2.01, 2.13. If any body from the public would like to make common respect to any of those items, please step up to the podium, state your name, school affiliation, um, give me some contact information so we can, we can, uh, don't say much. Anyway, um, this session was no longer than 30 minutes. Each speaker will have 30 minutes. Action items only. And Clark's not here, so I can see what's going on.
Now it's time?
Action items, yes.
See, I wanted Clark to be in the room. He knows me, but.
Can you call him in? Because we're going to.
I'm good. How are you doing? Plus, my daughter ditched me. She was here for a student. She left. So I shouldn't wait for Clark. I'll get started.
You can get started, and then, um.
Well, I'll begin by introducing myself, right? And I'll try to keep it to 30 minutes.
They're trying.
And, um, so my name is Hank Hirsch. I've lived in the community for 18 years. I've got three daughters, two of them go to Suffolk High School, one of them goes to the middle school. And I wanted to thank you for giving me an opportunity to talk to you, talk to you for a few minutes today. I also wish the police officers were still here because I wanted to thank them for all that they do. I really appreciate our law enforcement, so thank you to our retired law enforcement as well.
Thank you, sir.
So, I'm here because I'm a concerned parent about school security. And I know that I missed the last board meeting where I believe there were plans that were discussed on ways that we can harden up our schools to protect our children. Think that everything that was presented tonight by the members of law enforcement, our two great police departments, it's so admirable, it's really appreciated, and they're absolutely in the right direction, in my opinion, but I think that we need to really focus on the protection of our students. We never want our community to be a community that's on the news, and that needs to be the number one priority, in my opinion, of this board and of the parents in our community as well. The walkout that took place on March 14th, that Matt spoke to earlier, was so admirable. I really give all those students a lot of credit to take on such a, um, a position on, um, paying tribute to what happened in Parkland, Florida. But I also think that with our media, there was a lot of mixed messages going around with regards to that walkout. And even though there was a tribute, I'll start over. Even though there was a tribute that was taken place that everybody in our community respects, there was also a political message that was right behind that tribute with regards to gun control. And I'm not here to talk about politics because I don't think politics has any place in our schools. Um, I'll tell you that my daughter, who watches the news, she's really active on social media, uh, she didn't feel comfortable walking for the, uh, at 10 o'clock for 17 minutes because of the mixed messages, and she was bullied because of it. And the next day, one of her teachers gave the assignment of writing down three good things that can come of the walkout. And when she said that she didn't participate in the walkout, and there was also a couple of her students in the class that didn't, she was asked by the teacher, well, why not? So I guess my purpose here today with respect is to encourage you to communicate to the community the plans to harden the schools with security. And then secondly, I think we need to make the point to our administrators and our teachers that politics don't belong in the classroom. And with regards to the walkout, and I say this respectfully, I really think there should have been better communication and input with the parents before that walkout took place because there was a lot of things going on in the news, there were politicians speaking at walkouts in other communities, and I just think there was a, a bad mixed message that was sent. So hopefully, everything that I said makes some sense, and it's done in a respectful way, and I thank you for your time.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I had to call the first one outside of the water. I didn't want to, I didn't want to.
There is a video.
They don't want to be on Verizon News. You tap the whole thing right there.
Okay, all right, so, uh, I wasn't, haven't, I wasn't asked to pull anything from the action items. That's 2.01, 2.13, so I'd like to use consent agenda. We just got to 2.01, 2.13. If I could, if you, people could just, I, I asked that if you could just tell me beforehand because then I would change the order of the items, um, to make sure I don't forget anything because I have forgotten, I'm in the past. So, all right, so with the exception of 2.02, Angela, 2.01, and then 2.03, 2.13, Chair would entertain a motion to accept those as so stated.
Oh, me.
That would be Clark, second. Teresa, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions?
Stay.
One abstentions? Okay, I got them all, right, Angela? Okay. All right, so 2.0, I'm sorry, what's wrong? 3.01. This is school district calendar. You guys have a copy of the school district calendar in front of you, a hard copy. It's also on the, um, electronic dashboard, right? It was in the package. I have one, I have one. One side is white, blank, the other side is black. All right, so, um.
DC.
All right, so, um. All right, so, um, Dr. Adams, you want to, um, all right, guys, ready? It's late, and I think the snow's coming. We're not. Winter's coming. This right here is the proposed, we're not voting on it tonight, the proposed, um, calendar. Dr. Adams, if you would just do some background as to how we came up with this calendar, any issues that we have, and maybe some comments to respect to what the Department of Education might be doing with respect to hours and days and whatever.
Under current law, students are supposed to be at school 180 days a year. So you can see it up on the board, but at the bottom of the sheet, you'll see 180. The contract calls for 183 days, of which three of those are called superintendent conference days. The first superintendent conference day is the day after Labor Day, the day before school begins, and then we have one in the, the fall, and typically, one in the March timeframe. The calendars, um, throughout the county are very similar in terms of the December break, in terms of the February, February break, and in terms of the April break. There are some minor differences because some of the, uh, schools start before Labor Day, some don't have certain holidays, and, and so there, there are those differences. Some build into the, the calendar, um, the snow days, some don't, and, um, and so, you know, taking a look at the calendar this year, it's, it's a little bit, um, there's a little bit more flexibility in that Labor Day is earlier this year, and the last day of school is later. You know, the, once every seven years, we get jammed up where Labor Day is kind of late, and then the end of school is kind of early, so there aren't as many days to put a snow day.
I actually have a question about the last day of school. It's, it's on a Wednesday.
Yes.
Isn't that atypical? Hasn't it been?
Very typical.
Friday?
Yes.
So why, is there, is there a reason why you're ending on a Wednesday this year? Or, I mean, next year?
Except by the State Education Department, I guess. It's the region's rating day, and so they communicate to all districts that specific day, and the districts align their last day of school with the region's rating day.
So across the state, schools are going to be ending on a Wednesday next year? Okay, that just seems so.
Some may use it as a conference day, um, as a contractual requirement, but, but yes, you're going to see June 26th.
All right, it just seems so strange to me. It wasn't a Friday.
And we've started the discussion, you know, I think proactively about where do we put graduation next year? When, when are the elementary moving up ceremonies because of this middle-of-the-week sort of thing? And, uh, we, we've just started conversations, don't have an answer. There is a, um, I think the region's meets on March 26th or March 27th, and the 180 days will still be a requirement, but they will calculate it a little bit differently. They'll count up the number of hours. So it's, um, like 990 for secondary, and it's a different number for elementary. Um, and, and the reason why that's important for us is under existing law, half-days don't count. If half-days don't count, we don't get to 180. Um, because we have, I believe, 11 half-days at the elementary level, where the high schools end for the full day. A lot of school districts do that. Maybe they, they don't have 11 half-days, but many school districts have half-days, and that, um, that's problematic. But the region's recognizing that, has proposed counting hours. So we've, we've had the, the hours calculated by several different groups that this would apply to, and we will be able to beat the new region's requirement, assuming that they pass it next week. And we, we've not heard anything to the contrary, so we would expect that to be passed.
If, if that, if that passes, it doesn't, it wouldn't affect the, our calendar as it is, I mean, the calendar is what they're proposing it is, right? It won't affect in the sense that the half-days would count.
Yes.
But it won't affect.
There wouldn't be any proposed changes based upon the region's action. There's one thing that, um, um, before the next meeting, I, I will probably put in, and that would be on November 21st. One, one day of school year, we're supposed to have an, an early evacuation of all of the campuses, and we had intended to do that this month, but we had snow. So technically, we did do the early evacuation, but it was like three hours early instead of the 15 or 20 minutes early. And, and just so everybody has knowledge of that in advance, we think it's a good idea to put it into the calendar. And what some school districts that have put it into the calendar, they've put it the day before Thanksgiving for an extra 15, 20-minute early dismissal on that day.
On, on that day, though, only the elementaries have that day, right?
Right.
So the elementaries would be 15 minutes earlier than they have.
15 minutes earlier, yes.
And the other schools would be 15 minutes earlier, but they're full day still.
Correct. There, something that's come, or been brought to our attention, attention, um, relates to the February break, which was not much of a February break this year. I think, uh, there were three snow days, uh, out of the president's break or the February break. And, um, some school districts in Rockland County chose not to take any out of the February break. They may have had some extra days that we didn't have just because of the way their contract is, and also because some are taking it out of the April break. The reason why we, we look, we've looked at the February break as a possibility to take days from there is when you, I've There is a, I think the region's meets on March 26th or March 27th. And the 180 days will still be a requirement, but they will calculate it a little bit differently. They'll count up the number of hours. So, it's like 990 for secondary, and it's a different number for elementary. And the reason why that's important for us is, under existing law, half-days don't count. If half-days don't count, we don't get to 180. Because we have, I believe, 11 half-days at the elementary level, where the high schools end for the full day. A lot of school districts do that. Maybe they don't have 11 half-days, but many school districts have half-days. And that, that's problematic. But the region's recognizing that, has proposed counting hours. So we've had the hours calculated by several different groups that this would apply to, and we will be able to beat the new region's requirement, assuming that they pass it next week. And we've not heard anything to the contrary. So we would expect that to be passed.
If that, if that passes, it wouldn't affect the our calendar as it is. I mean, the calendar is what it is, right? It won't affect in the sense that the half-days would count.
Yes.
But it won't affect the change.
There wouldn't be any proposed changes based upon the region's action. There's one thing that, before the next meeting, I will probably put in, and that would be on November 21st. One day of school year, we're supposed to have an early evacuation of all of the campuses. And we had intended to do that this month, but we had snow. So technically, we did do the early evacuation, but it was like three hours early instead of the 15 or 20 minutes early. And just so everybody has knowledge of that in advance, we think it's a good idea to put it into the calendar. And what some school districts that have put it into the calendar, they've put it the day before Thanksgiving for an extra 15, 20-minute early dismissal on that day.
On that day, though, only the elementaries have that day, right?
Right.
So the elementaries would be 15 minutes earlier than they have. And the other schools would be 15 minutes earlier, but they're full day still.
Correct. There, something that's come, or been brought to our attention, relates to the February break, which was not much of a February break this year. I think there were three snow days out of the President's break or the February break. And some school districts in Rockland County chose not to take any out of the February break. They may have had some extra days that we didn't have, just because of the way their contract is, and also because some are taking it out of the April break. The reason why we've looked at the February break as a possibility to take days from there is, when you, I've gone back to 2004, but I don't know how accurate some of the records are from 2004. So I went back to the last five years. And if you look over the last five years, on average, we miss five days a year, on average. And on average, we miss, we have either early dismissal, or, I want to say late arrival, but that's not the term, delayed opening about three times a year. But five of the days, on average, that we miss each year, three of those five days occur before February. So if we don't take anything from the February break, like this year, three days, where do we find those days from? You know, this, with this proposed calendar, we would take two from May, and then the other three would come out at the April break. Next year, the April break is a little bit later, and not, not that kids are the best source of information, but if they, if they had a choice, instead of missing days in February where it's cold, they prefer to miss the days in February and not in April, because it's a little bit warmer in April. There's sporting, a lot of sporting events that are taking place in April. So their advice to me was try to preserve the April break as best you can. Well, to preserve the April break, then we have to take a look at if we get, if we lose days before February, which historically has been about three per year, that we need to come from the February break.
What about, because it doesn't always work where you have a full week in December, a full week in February, and a full week in April. You don't always have that.
That's correct.
What about, I mean, just a, just a thought. What about not having a full week in February, taking a few of those days, and moving them, say, down to May, having an extended Memorial Day break, and then chipping away those days for snow days?
There are some people, you know, the calendar, everybody has an opinion.
Of course. And look, I'm trying not to have an opinion, I'm just...
But the suggestion that's been made to, or some of the suggestions that have been made, is just as you point out, maybe make it a four-day weekend in February. You know, give Monday, Mondays are required holiday, give also Tuesday off. And then those three other days, go ahead and put in May. Knowing that we probably won't have five days off in May, but at least if they're coming out of May, we're not taking it from February. It's just not fair.
Right, exactly.
And so, many of the adults have said, do it that way. Because when you give, when the days are written into the calendar, even says, even though it says "snow day, snow day, snow day," it feels like they're being taken away. And if they're not there to begin with, they're not being taken away. So, and then, I think the last 11 years, now, I'll go 10. The last 10 years, we've had a full week in February scheduled, six times and four times not. So it's not always been a fully scheduled for February.
Right, right. So to me, that being the case, it's not as if everybody's so used to having this full week off in February, where you don't have it next year, it's not, you know, it's not crisis.
I agree, it seems like, right, if February, we keep getting storms, it's like, ask a couple years later, I agree, I think it's a good idea.
You know, the suggestion also about February is, you know, people have said, you know, we're just off a week, next year it'll be seven days for the December break, and then we don't have a break until the last week, last full week of April.
Right.
And that's other, they, keep the April break. The adults and the kids have said, try to keep the April break in the calendar.
Dr. Adams, isn't there also something, I remember years ago, I remember in May, with disrupting the teaching and getting into testing, and how that could also pull things off balance? I know that that's been discussed in the past with the May timeframe. It becomes a little tricky with the teachers and the students. So you might be able to talk more to that fall or somebody else, but I know we've talked about it.
Yeah, if we just do February 18th and 19th, that Monday and Tuesday, and forget about the 20th, 21st, and 22nd, though I think 22nd is Washington's birthday officially.
I think so.
Yes.
The New York State only recognizes Lincoln's.
Yes, I know. But that's the junior they must recognize, 22nd. So if we move those three days, rather than in May, if we added them to April, maybe the 29th, 30th, and May 1st, that still gives teachers...
But you're going to take something.
Yeah, and if there's snow days, then let me take it from May, May 1st, then April 30th, then April 29th, and yet you're still, still, you're basically, it's spring, spring break.
The other thing to consider too, when we actually, a couple of years ago, we actually had a couple of teachers stand up to comment with respect to this. And their comment was that if they're losing, say, we're in the second semester, if they're losing a day in the second semester for a snow day, they want to make up the snow day in the second semester. There's only a certain amount of days, school days, you have as it is.
Yes.
And there's a lot of, you know, especially at the high school level.
Right.
It's a lot of work.
Regions, regions, perhaps.
And they want to make it up in that semester, losing a day in, in, most classes, even more difficult classes, is, could have an effect on, you know, the kids or the families. I know a couple of teachers had actually tried and done that. I think that's what we kind of was back to, taking the days in February, because we wanted to make the days up as soon as we could.
Well, yeah, but...
You know, putting them in, putting them in May, you know, aside from, yeah, May's kind of too late.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm just looking at this, probably the AP exams start May 6th.
I was just going to say.
So therefore, maybe we should do it in the 16th, 17th, and 18th of April. I'm, you know, just playing, not playing.
Well, the kids should be happy, it's warm on this February.
Right.
Well, they're not going to get too exhausted, though, because those are the days for all the problem, partially, potentially.
Right.
They're not going to end up having all these days off, it just prevents you from going into May, where I think it upsets the curriculum or what I told. But it also offsets the fact that we know we usually get snow after February, because I, we got 26 inches the day after my birthday, which is warm every year. So it's just the way it is.
So you're, you're...
I brought it on.
I'm rubber snow blowers, Michael.
And Stevenson lost it right in the head.
So that's just a thought, you know, it's just...
You could even take the days and break them off, if you were wanting the end, if you were wanting the 29th, or the other two, on the 17th and 18th.
Come on.
Yeah. Thanks, so thanks for reading my mind, Becky. Raise minds. I think the best way is to not really take all those three days in a row in February, because that's been an issue this year. And I understand that in some years, we don't have the February break. But since it's doable, I'm thinking that we, you know, add snow dates in, you know, maybe one year and one day, rather than lump them all and have almost two weeks of no school, or have really long extended break before AP exams and other exams, where teachers want to review material, et cetera, et cetera. But maybe like add, you know, a day in May, or early, like the 23rd and 29th, maybe, let's spread them out that way. And then maybe a third one in April. So if we divide those three, one April and two in May, I think that would work best. And I believe we've had them in the past a little longer in May, because it's late May and most exams are done, at least at the state level, exams, and the APs are done by then. So I prefer maybe just a couple of days added to that May break, as opposed to taking them away from the February break. Honestly, remembering back in the days, a week in February is not a gift to go away somewhere warm, or if you love the snow, to skip, maybe families have schedule notifications during that week, and end up not canceling the plans and going anywhere. I just think that realistically, to make sure kids are in class as much as we can when we're open, and teachers also don't have a conflict with their other kids in other districts being off, I recommend again, and I said that last year, not to take away from the February break three days like that. If you must, take one, at least one day, or take none from the February break. Thank you.
I think it also needs to be considered too, and I think had been making the schedules what the other schools are doing, so everybody, because there are teachers who can, you know, work here in council districts. But also BOCs, that's an issue too. You want to kind of align the calendar with BOCs, and that's like a bigger issue. So, you know, there's a lot that goes into the calendar, it's not just, you know... Have you read the calendars yet, or that's still in order?
Yes, stay tuned.
Yeah, this is, I think we've heard this, because this is by far the most consistent stage, it's a version of overseas and the rest of the county. Again, there are slight differences in other places in the county, they may have on-student days or extra campus day. But the week in February is from BOC's perspective and most of the rest of the county, it's a consistent preference.
But there's snow dates specifically, do you mind, or would it be a problem or an issue, if they're, all three are not from that week, that they're spread out a little bit more? Is there an issue with that? Because I've asked that last year as well.
The challenge of having a lot of snow days at the end of the year in May is region's exams. And region's exams do not start until June. So that's a challenge with a lot of days off just prior to that.
So like having, maybe adding a day or two in April, and then adding a day or two in May?
Well, the other challenge I would add, which I haven't heard mentioned, and forgive me if I'm speaking out of turn, but to add a lot of days in April and May for working parents, that's incredibly challenging. Because that's a short timeframe for them to have to take a lot of days off or arrange for cutting to them kids. So I do just want to kind of throw that out there, because those aren't traditional days for them to be off. I mean, April's a little bit, but most working parents, if they're lucky, have Memorial Day off, and don't have any of the other days around them. So I just want to, pardon, out of turn on that one, but I think it is something that's a challenge.
So we're rolling the dice, no matter what we do.
Yeah, no matter what we do.
Yeah.
You know, we've had so many snow days, like, years, that if you don't take, if you don't take the first few early, you could be stuck with nothing, you know, so at the end, you could be scrambling.
Right.
So I think, so I think, you know, in part that proves you want to be had in there, I think 75% of the snow days...
Oh, it's been updated.
Oh, it's been updated, so...
Sorry.
Oh, now, 70% is before the February break. So that's part of the reason why we use it, because 70%, you know, work with the odds, as they do in baseball.
Well, okay, so then, why don't we, just as a thought, designate the 20th, 21st, and the 22nd as days of school in February?
That, and that's the, that's exactly it. That's the reverse of, that's the give back as opposed to take.
Right.
Right. And I think I had...
But of course, BOCs is closer.
The other, certainly, we've talked about that, it's been a lot of places. The challenge, just logistically internally, is that this has been practiced for so long in the district that aspects of this are written into certain technical requirements. It's an implication for staff attendance and other conditions behind these days. So if we could do that, then we'd have to do it at least a year out, so we'd have time to ask some of these people to come to the table and change parts of their current agreements.
So what, that's, you could another aspect, contracts. Just adding a day at the end, an option, Dr. Adams?
We can't add a day after the 26th. The state will not count that.
Oh, they won't count?
They won't, and so no funding for that.
Thank you. So, there you go. So, so...
Everything's up in here.
You love February plus 5/4?
All right, can, can we go to a different calendar? Like, is there a calendar from 1400s?
I think, I mean, in the end, you know, as you guys are listening to the comments here, you know, administrators are going to do what's appropriate, based upon not only what our contract says, because there's so many comments out there, it's like, well, contractual, we can't do that. Thank you. Contractual, other schools, BOCs. So I think with some information, maybe you can make a recommendation, whether it's this or something else.
Part of what I heard, the guidance from the board, was to try to, as much as possible, align the BOCs, because we have to, to the 10 BOCs, and to the extent we can align it with other Rockland County school districts. So there's been a concerted effort to coordinate that as much as we can. It's not perfectly lined up, but the February break, the April break are pretty much the same throughout the county, at least being proposed to be the same throughout the county. It's just where the makeup days occur, the snow days occur.
What about the superintendent conference days? So what's the, like, what are the regulations about when those get scheduled, if there are?
Lee, do you want to jump in on this?
Sure. So the first one is the first day of school, which is like the most typical thing ever, Staff Orientation Day. One is Election Day. That's advantageous to us, well, let me talk about the March Day, and then I'll go back to Election Day. The March Day is a countywide superintendent's conference day. And that's a great opportunity, everyone in the county has a conference day that day. We just had ours last week, a tremendous opportunity, particularly for our smaller departments, to get, and even some of our larger departments, but to get together with colleagues from other schools. The social studies event this year had 200 social studies educators from Rockland at it. Two small groups, like FLESC, which is only us in Clarkstown, and it was 11 people meeting in a room. So it's, that's a day that everyone has agreed upon.
So the March one is not flexible at all?
So the only one that's really flexible is Election Day. But Election Day does have some of those same advantages. For example, the Rockland County Music Education Association, which is all the music teachers are part of that, they do an Election Day event. Typically, Election Day is a professional development day, a superintendent's conference day. In most districts, that actually goes back to the days when people voted in the schools, and then you didn't have so much of the issue of kids and voters in the building at the time. So it's a holdover from that. But it has turned into a really advantageous day to have as a conference day, because so much is offered in the county, and regionally, people can take advantage of things, again, outside the district, and it gives us a chance to have professional development as well.
Now, when we had Superstorm Sandy, we missed a lot of days that year, and we ended up taking the March Superintendent Conference Day out.
I think we went to school on Election Day, too.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
So we, all right, yeah, so we've done that in the past, but, and the commissioner, she has the authority to give us waivers, and we've requested a waiver for this year, and she said no, at least so far.
Maybe after a while.
So we have to hope that it only snows on the weekends?
So, on what grounds does she approve or deny a waiver? I mean, what is it supposed to be based on?
I've seen it be approved, you know, seven years. And even with Sandy, if those days were approved.
And that would go for other districts as well, I mean, not just us.
Yeah, and so, pretty much the lower Hudson Valley, all the superintendents wrote a letter to her requesting a waiver about two weeks ago. She said no, you know, maybe upper parts of New York, where they get lots of snow, maybe they miss a few more days. But I think it's maybe like a catastrophic event where school is out for 10 days in a row because of a fire, or something like that.
If the governor calls a state of emergency, we still have to make the school, the school day up?
Yes.
That doesn't make sense.
Yes.
He's telling you, don't be out on the roads. And then he can tell you, you don't make it up.
Yeah, absolutely. Totally embarrassing, yeah.
I mean, Superstorm Sandy, right?
No, that's...
It was devastating, and we, and we...
Well, because, well, that also triggers state of emergency with mass transit and everything else, and they're going to put it in, it's called the pandemic.
All right, so, is that clear for you?
No.
I love that. Hope is a strategy, but we can vote... Okay, any other, any other comments? I mean, admin's going to obviously listen to what's been said, and you're going to, you know, this, this schedule is honestly, it looks pretty far for the course for almost every other year that we had, because we got the December, we got the February, we got the April. Snow days as early as possible to make them up, and then, you know, it's good that we have those left over in May for the snow days that we can have, and crazy enough, in March, and it's been in April. Align the BOCs as best as we can in other districts. I think they've tried to get them to be somewhat similar, not going to be perfect, but I think that's quite the best that we've asked them, so.
Okay.
I'm just trying to back up.
So where, when, when did the emergency BOCs change? I just realized that now, that February is now 1, 2, 3.
Yeah, 22, 21.
But I, when I look at this... But I, when I looked at this this afternoon, I think the two May dates were the first and second.
You can't do, you can't do May because the Senate falls after February, you can just take the early ones.
But that's not how the calendar is written this afternoon on Wednesday. No, I'm sure.
No, it was not. The, there were, we had two options. One was the February days first, and one was the February days last.
Right.
And what got posted was the February days last.
Correct.
It should have been first, so we reposted. And that's why we printed this out for you tonight.
Who's talking, going on over there?
Guys, in addition, since my understanding, the union looked at this, John Canty looked at it, and whoever else we had looking at it, you know, for whatever...
And they will get with the closing in these order, right, in February, then May?
Yes, this is, yes, this is the one that they looked at.
So everybody at home who's been looking at board docs has actually been looking at something incorrect.
Because it's a discussion, I know, that was not posted to board docs.
Well, it was posted, though, though.
It was not posted to board, of course.
Okay.
Right.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, anything else? You done?
Yes.
You showed numbers off there, it's like...
It's something that would look right.
All right, excellent, thank you. All right, public participation, this is public participation as to any school district business, 4.01. This session lasts no longer than 30 minutes. If you have a comment, you respect any school district business, please step up to the podium, say your name, school affiliation, maybe a contact information, so we can respond. So I say the speaker has three minutes. It's a terrific ad, but ditto from every other reading. And again, pursuit of policies 1230, 1430, 30 to 40, please do not be common respect any district personnel or staff, there are other ways to do it, if you just read through those policies. I appreciate it, thank you. Okay, seeing us? No break?
No, we are good.
Okay, sorry, going to my last stuff. All right, so Chair, Dr. Adam, do you have any closing comments?
Just, I know it's like, what Matt Dane had mentioned, the musical begins Thursday night. I had the privilege to attend the dress rehearsal on Sunday, and it was, well, it was nice being the only one in the auditorium to see everything, and it was so quiet, the kids were just absolutely amazing, the sets, the tech, the technology that's involved in it, I think you'll be very impressed if you have a chance to see it. And then it was kind of neat to, to watch the director, watch the orchestra director, you know, conductor Dan McCarter, and then the set director, Mr. Murray, just to get kind of a different perspective. But the singing was great, the movements on the stage were great, so if you get a chance, and we don't have another blizzard, Thursday, Friday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And last year, I attended the understudy as well, Lisa and I had attended that, and the understudy kids are equally amazing, so please turn out.
Very impressive, as I always want. Okay, at this point, Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. Teresa?
No, that was Amani.
Oh, Amani, sorry.
I was going to strike it out.
Second. All those papers signify, I say aye. Aye, aye, pose attention, so, all right, there we go. Very good, here we go. Teresa?